Okay, I'll call the October 19th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. And if we could please rise for the pledge allegiance. Jerry, would you please lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any more additional agenda and consent calendar items. Delegations, Jerry, do you have any? You're there, so, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5th.
Yes, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen of October 5th, 2022, as submitted.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann. Any comments or corrections?
Yes, page three, it says, Mr. Barry Sheckley and Mr. Vivek Purohik, P-U-R-O-H-I-K. And the last letter, instead of being K, should be T. And then also, it should say, Ann J. Ginsburg, because he also gave a little presentation. So that should be added. And then also, when you go down to the list of members who were appointed to the Charter Revision Committee, again, Vivek Purohik. The last name is, it's P-U-R-O-H-I-T, not K. So there's just a misspelling there.
Right. Well, that has been corrected because he called us. So on what is on file in the Clerk's office has already been corrected for the actual charge that is
Okay, great.
going to be published and so forth like that. But for the minutes, I'm glad you brought that to me.
Yeah, so we just need to add Jake Ginsburg also, because he spoke that night.
Okay. Ann, you okay with the, that alteration?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, everyone in, all those in favor of the minutes amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Oh, that's for two, hand ten. Carries three to one. Moving on to consent calendar.
Okay, move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of October 19th, 2022, in the amount of $27,062.86.
Is...
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Okay. Do I have the regional, I don't have that in my book? No, I'm not? Okay, so it must be in here. No, I actually really don't have it in here.
Really?
Yep.
Do you need this one?
Oh, here it is. Okay, it didn't have the folder, it didn't have the, that little binder over the top of it, so. Okay, just to move on to this, they talked about this at the Police Commission meeting last week as well. East Lime would like to enter into an agreement, Waterford Police to establish the shoreline traffic accident reconstruction team, which, you know, start. This is where if we had a serious injury accident or one that required a little bit more investigation and so forth like that, fatalities or something, they would call in, the team would come in and process it. What it does is, having been in accident reconstruction, when I was a state trooper, I did a lot of that. It's an expensive stuff for the equipment and so forth like this. This would allow us to share costs for equipment and also for resources. Lots of other towns, Stonington and Groton have done this. There are towns to the west of us that have also done it, and it's turned out to be very advantageous. Where this really comes in handy, if one of our, say, one of our police officers is involved in an accident, this way, we could call in, and that's where the Waterford team would probably take the lead in something like this, too. So it's been very cost-effective. And the Waterford, as it says here, Waterford Town Attorney has approved it. Their Police Commission has approved it. Our Police Commission has moved it forward to us as well. But our town attorney hasn't looked at it, so all we're looking for tonight would be a motion to send forward the draft to our town attorney for review and comment. This won't slow it down at all, because Waterford has about another month to go before it goes to their RTM for approval. So we should be able to get this back. So the chief said he could come tonight, but I said I don't think there's any need for that. The document was pretty thorough. I did notice a couple typos already, and so I'll make sure the town attorney knows that as well. But it's, you know, right now, and this is, you may have read in the paper also, Ledyard and Waterford have entered into an agreement more for a tactical team. That doesn't, this is not what this is. You know, that might come at some point in time, but as of right now, this is strictly for accident, to form an regional shoreline traffic accident reconstruction team.
Is it, is it only for serious injuries or fatalities?
No, here again, no, it isn't. Here again, that's where the supervisor would determine, because there, you might, even at a minor accident, because last year we had the pedestrian accident on Main Street, minor injuries. But because it was pedestrian, the individual was conscious alert, but he banged his head, so you'll, you'll have that, you'll bring in the resources there. Because there's a whole lot of small things that you could do then, that if it did become problematic later, you can determine, you know, a whole lot, speed, the environmental factors, there's a whole lot of stuff you do to process the scene. But it would not just be for serious.
Is the advanced, you know, specialized investigator, is that somebody from either the East Lime Police Department or the Waterford Police Department?
It would be both.
Or is it somebody like separate?
No, it's somebody from East Lime and Waterford. It's a, it's a team. It would, it would be comprised of. We have three people who have advanced training for accident reconstruction. Waterford, I believe, has six. So we have, between the two, we'd have ample resources.
And it sounds like whatever resources the towns use would each pay their own individual.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So, any other questions?
Just a broad question. Were there any other municipalities that were considered, like, let's say, Montville being part of this?
No, Montville wouldn't at this point in time, because they're still covered by the state police.
Gotcha.
So the state police would have jurisdiction there, too. And like I said, towns east of the river, London has their own team, but Groton and Stonington are together and stuff like that, so, yeah.
So if, if an accident occurred in East Lime, then would East Lime necessarily take the lead and then, and then what?
Yes, yeah, they would process it. And here again, if it came down to where you're going to file charges, or is it going to be, that would be done by East Lime.
Whoever has jurisdiction over it.
Yeah, whoever had jurisdiction. But here again, it doesn't, you know, as you would know, well, no, too, that doesn't involve another expert from coming in and doing some scene work in that, so. Yeah. And, you know, a good, a good, a good example of this, as I said, is if one of our crews was in an accident where, you know, you wanted to have more, a more thorough investigation, you have Waterford come over. And in that case, they might take the lead and, as far as the investigation, and it would be very helpful.
It leaves the bias problem to someone like Ray.
Yes, it does, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
So Kevin, is the plan that town attorney will review and then send back to us?
With any comment, and then for, then for us to approve it? And then, once, if it's approved at the RTM, then it goes into effect.
Did they mention at the Police Commission meeting, is this kind of a, it looks a little bit like a, for lack of a better expression, form contract in this area, you know, in this, on this topic. So the arrangements, the, and the way the wording is and so forth. I mean, I imagine that this, you know, maybe a police association has generated this kind of...
Yeah, this, this is something, the, these type of cooperations are growing as time goes on.
Okay.
Because, you know, one of the big things always, let's regionalize, and this is the case for doing it, where now we have somebody else that we could share the cost with, and you have more resources available. Here again, we have three. They're all not going to always be available, but with, with a team like this, you'd always have enough people to do it. I remember doing it with me and hopefully another trooper to help me. And you'd be, you'd spend hours at the scene.
Sure, right.
It's advanced waste, and then as far as capabilities and equipment that you have available to you.
So, just one more question. So it says here, they're going to have a start unit commander who they're going to, will act as a liaison between the departments. And so the start unit commander could be either from East Lime or Waterford, and then everybody has to basically...
You basically have one person in charge, but, you know, as far as, at the scene, that would be the person probably directing the operations. But here again, if it was an East Lime accident, the report would be authored and so forth, and any type of conclusions would be...
Based upon the different accidents, you have a different unit commander, or is it always the same then? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. I know we have, what page are you on? So I can just...
Page two.
Page nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have one unit commander, it would be a sergeant who would oversee the, basically, the team.
Okay.
Yeah, one sergeant.
You gotta, I think you have to distinguish a unit commander from an administrative supervisor, right?
Right.
So the administrative supervisor would be at the scene of an actual event.
Yeah. And here again, there might be times when the unit commander might not show up.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the chain of command is, you know, clear, yeah, because you don't want to have any problems saying, well, you know, I don't listen to you, I report to you.
Oh, that would never happen.
So I think they really tried to spell that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear, yeah.
Yeah.
To clear that concern.
So, anyway, so, all right.
Yeah, so we'll move to approve forwarding the draft shoreline traffic accident reconstruction team document to the town attorney for review and comment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Oh, Sandy, what you did, when you put the Darryl Pond thing in, you put it over the top of that. That's what caused, because that just came in.
I put them on the...
Yeah. So moving on, under all business discussion, possible action regarding Darryl Pond. We had some questions come up last time about the easements. We have identified what all the easements are. There's several of them. And on that map, which will be attached to the, to the property, to the documentation for the purchase of Darryl Pond, it indicates which ones are in that 101-plus acres. The only thing that would be fixed are a part of the radio, the communications tower, which has gone up there, and the site of a future water tower, which is delineated on the map. Everything else, some of them dated, as I mentioned prior to the meeting, talking to a couple of you, was, they go back to 1905, 1926. And this is basically for people in enjoying property to be able to traverse over this. So nothing that would be prohibitive as far as us doing that. And that's all been delineated. What we also, like I said, I, Bill Share did that. One of our interns down in planning went and photocopied all the pages, so everything will be attached to that, so we know exactly what is involved there. Regarding the draft resolution, what's changed from the last one is, in the very first line, approximately 300, there was not a space there, so we had that done. And then, part two, where it referred to the difference in numbers in, under the ordinance concerning areas of jurisdiction. What we did is, I talked to town attorney, he said, so the Darryl Pond, persons entering upon or designated portion, et cetera, shall be subject to the provisions set forth in ordinance 96.15, and that is the ordinance concerning areas under jurisdiction of Parks and Recreation Commission. Rather than, it had numbers, now there's letters. If in the future it changes, this way, it'll still be under that ordinance, so that was done, too. And I think that was the only change that was brought up. And here again, at the end, if the commission desires to, any alteration or destruction of an existing topography and so forth, it specifies that they'll receive the board's, of selectmen's consent to conduct such activity, and same thing, that's reemphasized in number five as well. And, and I gave everyone a copy of our regulation 9615, or the ordinances, so. Jerry, do you have any further questions on it? You and I talked about this earlier today, so. And I'd like to thank, Jerry has been very, you know, very communicative, making sure anything that he needed to do was taken care of and so forth, so. Any further comments on the, okay?
I'll move to approve the draft resolution, Ray Darryl Pond property as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. Any more comments? You're going to have a happy commission now, so, anyway. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Moving on, update on the charter revision. We had the kickoff yesterday. It is a very good group of people. You could just see the way they interacted. Mark Salerno was elected chair of the committee. Jeff McNamara was elected vice chair. And a nice present, we covered the charge, and then Ed got up and talked about the, you know, basically that timeline we had and so forth going back. Then they talked about what moving forward. So there'll be a public hearing on November 1st at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria at the middle school. We were looking for the caf, the, at the high school, we were looking for the auditorium, but they're getting that, coming up real close to their fall play and this rehearsal time, so we didn't want to interfere with that. So it's going to be at the cafeteria at the middle school, November 1st, at 1 o'clock, at 7:00. And it'll be posted in the day on Saturday. It's also going to be on our website. It's on there now, the charge, but we'll have the charge as long as, as well as the notice of the public hearing. And we're going to move it, right now, it's a little hard to get to on our website, but Sandy took care of talking to the comments there, that's going to be moved up to where it's much easier to access. And we're also going to post it on some public social media pages, too. But it was a good meeting. They talked about, you know, and with Beth Hogan there, you've got someone who's got past history on it. You have Jeff McNamara, who's got three decades-plus service to the town on the Board of Selectmen, judge of probate, and just, you know, active in town. Just a very, very good group of people doing that, and we'll keep going as they come. But they have, this is the first public hearing they have to have before starting substantive work. And I think all of us took some calls or texts from people saying, well, the charge is already done, you know. No, that's what we sent to them. And, you know, everyone is invited to be heard to say what they might like to see, as well as what the committee, what the commission would like to do. In fact, last night, they were even talking. There's just some general cleanup of that, that they would like to do. You know, we call it selectmen. Well, it's select person. It really should be, because, you know, talking about just, you know, minor things like that, that get overlooked over time. And there's stuff that refers back to things that are back in 19, Jake Ginsburg pointed out, talking about 1965. Those maybe need to go, you know, that dead cleanup type of thing. So they had obviously all done their homework coming into the meeting, and they're ready to go. And their feeling is, get as much done as quickly as you possibly can, so they have time to get through things. And as I said, Ally Christensen and Sam Gary are going to be available to do some research for them, which will save time, so. And town council available as well, too. So we did specify that for them not to individually start calling the town council, because that gets expensive very quick, to go through their chair, so that's it. Any other comments? And thanks for everyone that, I know, Ann, you brought, you've got some very good people to, brought forward and so forth, so I think it's looking, things are looking good. Ex officio reports, we're moving along. Ann?
I don't think I have anything. Tomorrow, I have Town Building Committee.
Okay.
Okay. I have the harbor management selfish commission meeting last night, and they're still in the midst of trying to find a new harbor master, exactly. We also had a presentation for moorings, Inc. And what this was is to basically digitize the records for the mooring, so people would apply online. And then this would, I guess, relieve the harbor master of all the administrative duties, because, I mean, there's stuff to do some, but it, there's huge amounts of paperwork that takes hours and hours to do. So we're looking into that. And there was one presentation, and they reached out to two other vendors also upon my recommendation, and they're waiting to hear back. So we're going to, they're going to be giving a presentation, I can't remember the date now. I think it's like November 2nd, from like 10 to 12, to the, like a Zoom meeting to, for people to understand how to do it. Just not for the town, but just for the commission. Because we were in the other room, and it was difficult to see, it was just via Zoom. So that's what's going, going on there at this point.
Great. Dan?
Yes, I attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on October 13th. They, they were reviewing, they have a fund balance, I guess there's approximately $41,000 in it. It's un-audited at this point, but I think they're looking to, you know, have, have the audit completed as part of, you know, the work that's being done, so they have a better sense of what's there. And then, and then there was a discussion on how that money is held, and what really, what, how is that $41,000 comprised, and what other things that they do, other services that they provide, can, you know, reduce that balance. And they wanted to know, is any of it totally reserved, you know, from, from other activities that they, they provide? So they're trying to get a better understanding of how that fund balance works, and looking to have a good handle on that in the future. They reported about the beach, the McCooks Point tent. As, as you know, that was, the new tent was destroyed by, by wind damage, and they did get a partial refund, and they anticipate getting a full refund for the tent. There was discussion of what, what should replace that structure. There were concerns about, as many know, that the McCooks Point deed has certain restrictions on placement of fixed structures. You may recall when we put in the ban shell, that we had to be very careful that we didn't violate any of the terms of the, of the deed. And likewise, with, I believe, the reason it was a tent was because that's a temporary structure, and that sort of got around that, that issue in the location where the tent was previously. They're wondering, and the discussion was, should we look at the idea of maybe putting a more permanent structure, like the, another pavilion that they have near the parking lot? Or should they go back to the old-style tent that they had that had the metal frame that seemed to be more durable? So they're, they're looking into that, and they're considering those options, and I think that'll be something they'll be reporting back about in the future. Still great interest in pickleball. That's, that's a big thing, and I guess any, all of the courts that have been, areas that have been assigned for use for pickleball are really utilized almost 100%, and so, there's great interest in trying to expand that. And they talked about developing and revisiting their mission, vision, statements, goals, and they talked about branding as a way of marketing the services that they provide to a wider audience, so. That was, that was our meeting. It seemed very proactive in moving forward in a lot of areas.
One thing regarding pickleball, since you talked about it, I talked to Jerry about it, too. He's even talked about an area he thinks that could be located at Briar Brook Park, that's accessible to lighting. And he said, so I told him, he's going to try and research some costs and see if something we could fit into the capital plan, but, you know, we do know about the interest here, and we're looking to see if we can address that coming up, so I've talked to him about that. Moving on for my report, as everyone knows, Siff Bakery opened up on Saturday, and there was a lot of traffic going into the, into the bakery. Quite a few, probably like 20 deep all the time outside, waiting to get in. But the chief put, I think I emailed everyone, that the chief did put an extra officer on from 8:00 to 4:00, and there was no traffic backups or anything like that. Grand Street was our concern, too. A little bit of slow traffic on occasion on Main Street, because, okay, where do we park? But it seems most people went to the municipal lots or over there, or, you know, or into the parking lot where, behind it, which you access off of Grass Street. They said the parking lot was full, and that was also competing with an open house at the condos as well. So you probably had a good set of, a good feel for what the traffic would be like there once it's in there. So I waited till Monday to go in, and yes, there was still a line to go in. Monday, it wasn't that bad, but you still had to wait a couple seconds to get in. But, and just to remind people that there are still several other great places to stop to, to get a meal or some baked goods as well, Giuliano's. I talked to Tabitha at Cafe Sol, said it didn't impact her at all over the weekend. She said, not at all. So she said she had good business, so. You know, we talked about November 1st being the public hearing for the, first public hearing for the charter revision, so people are welcome to come and give us, give that commission their input. October 27th, a week from Thursday, a week from tomorrow, will be the Route 161 corridor presentation in the auditorium of the high school at 6:00 PM. I don't think it'll be recorded, because a lot of proprietary stuff in that, because of, but I'm not positive on that. But there will be handouts there, and there'll be stations for people to get different information. They have, we've had bimonthly meetings, and they're always extremely informative. They've done a lot of really good work on this, too. They'll be able to answer a lot of the questions as far as the 161-74 interchange. That's going to obviously be a, something of interest. And you can tell, it's, it's almost like Starlight and the gas station, whenever they're, they're now, you come down, it's, it's, and it seemed like it was a much bigger area when they were there, too. But that, you know, I would recommend anybody, that is going to be broadcast, though, so, but if people can't make it, they can watch it. Anyway, too, just some other things, real quick. Sidewalk, we're going to put a sidewalk in, even though it's a state road, we have to put it if we want it. We had the funding and everything from Walgreens up to past Dollar General to the crosswalk for, they're coming, if the students are coming out of the high school by the fire department. We were all set to do that, but they're putting in that small, age-restricted housing right there now, that has been approved. And that's going to be going in between now and next spring. We couldn't have, we wouldn't be able to completely, it would have dead-ended just before, so people have to go into the road. So we've decided to wait till probably next fall to do that, and then be able to do it, and also get the person putting in the development to do a little bit of it, to save us some dollars. So it's going to be slitty year, but it made sense, because it was going to have to stop because of the construction. Outside of that, really not much else to report. You know, I was going to mention about the pickleball, but we, we've already done that. Fall sports at the high school is in full swing. They did get a chance to irrigate the, the field, the baseball field. They have been watering that. The infield looks good. Now they're irrigating the outfield, because that warmer weather we've had last week helped out a little bit, too. The drought, as much as we all think, we've had a lot of rain. Well 6 is still having some problems, as you were at the meeting, too. We just don't have the flows we were hoping to. They're, they're coming, they're getting better. There's going to be a project coming forward where they want to tie, reactivate, or do some serious work with well 2. It's going to be expensive, but it will basically add an extra 800 gallons a minute, once they get it done. So the thought is to get that done. It'll make us a little less dependent on New London in the summer, and it'll also help reduce our manganese, manganese levels and so forth like that, so. That's about it. Any questions for me? Okay. So communications, none, comment? Nobody here, so no selectors response, so we just have to go into executive session real quickly to talk about the firefighters and police union contracts, so.
Okay, so I'm going to move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, firefighter and police unions. The board is entering into executive session at 7:29 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Okay, we're, we're back out of executive session with no action taken, and Ann has, Ann Santora's recorded the time we have returned to regular session. So we have a couple items, too, and that's to act on the extension, the, what... So we have a couple items too, and that's to act on the extension, the one-year extension of the firefighters' union agreement first.
Okay, move to approve the, let's, also, we'll finish this on. We returned from executive session at 7:57, and no formal votes were taken. Next, move to approve the contract extension between East Line Firefighters Union and the Town of East Line for, for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. And the last action?
Sure. Move to approve the contract extension between the East Line Police Union and the Town of East Line for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Okay, and move, move to adjourn the regular meeting of October 19, 2022 at 7:58 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And have a great evening, everyone.